Reports in your file there, everything's in black, we're coming up on the end of the year so all the numbers are supposed to be next before me and then one at a time. And your motion. I'll make the motion for each treasurer's report.
Motion made, second. John, second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Okay, next time is approve the request.
My requests are number eights, nine, eight, nine, and fifteen there, so we will vote one if you want. Number eight, there is the salary approval, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. The list that you have in front of you and your packets is what we're covering. If you want to make any changes for that, then we can take this until the courier, then you guys look at it and if you decide you want any changes you want to make, I just have to have that number before that day to present the new numbers, so.
I'll make the motion. Wait, wait, I'm confused, we usually vote the individual approved deals.
No, we're not so the bill yet, we're on.
Yeah, that's number six.
Right, we skipped to number eight, we're gonna come back to those.
Salary.
Yeah, it is a separate item.
Question was, did they sort out the requests list that I'm on there, which we're gonna take off of there.
It's number.
The number six is the approved treasurer's request. I'm gonna start individually listing each request like. We can actually mark out number six if you want.
Number dot, number what?
Number state. They're listed individually, so yeah, we can just mark that off, it has moved. It says six, seven, or eight, nine, fifteen, I don't have that for the course.
So, remove the deals.
We go ahead with the bills.
Okay, next time is approve deals.
Those lists are in your package there, it's our number a month ago, nothing, nothing out of order now.
Make the motion to accept deals. We have a motion made, second. Second, okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, approve salary approval.
So, in your package, you have a list of all our current employees. The only difference between last year and that list is that their redistricter salaries that we have increased by a dollar because of revenue. Not increases for the non-직원. Other than that, that list mirrors last year's benefits. If you want to make a change of that, you can vote on that now, or when you set that for the 30th, we just have that been up until the end of the month.
I'll make the motion, we take it until the 30th.
I'll say it. Motion, second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, vote for twenty-four, twenty-five here.
That's this fiscal year, that's just moving money around with different budgets to make sure everything's in the black before we do our fourth quarter reports at the LG. On the 30th, we have a few more notes, because everything has to be in the black. It's the same money in the budget, we're just moving from one night on to the other, so make sure it balances out.
Okay, make a motion. Make a motion to approve the request. Motion made by David. I'll say it, David, my house, any more discussion? Hearing none.
Vote fifteen, and we've scheduled a special meeting for June 30th.
Can we just keep those in order, that's what she does, I mean, it's just.
Okay, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Judge Carter. They're not rescheduling time back at later date, they weren't able to do here. And on the orders, I'll speak more a bit. The state's still got some things to do on it, I know there's a lot of questions across the state, some counties have done it already. We still have time to do it, there's two parts to that. One is to allow them to license ATVs, they have to go through sheriff inspection, check and then train on that. We still have that training. They've really kind of rested, the deadline's at 27, but it could still be done after that. But I know KCO is supposed to have a webinar for the counties that go over, they gave a sample of orders to go by. But there at least will be a little bit more discussion on that. So I'll keep going, as soon as I have more information, I'll elaborate it to you all.
So, next time is to approve Blaine, Department of City, eight, number nine. Okay, there's what we done with it, it's number.
We done, not in the month. I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll say it. We have a motion made, second, any more discussion? Hearing none, move driveway, eight, for city. Is that considered one in town here? Is that considered one in town here? See why they haven't put silver in there?
I think it's relocating. I think that was a relocating, maybe a way.
Okay, need a motion, and a second. I'll make a motion. John, say the motion. Read the second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, approve of fields. Brent, Westmore.
Those are three-year terms, we got a person coming up.
Read, say the motion, and.
I'll say it.
And, okay, second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, approve of July donation. What we usually do for the, we use the.
That's all I had, the budget from last year, three years of the budget.
I want to say he does a quarter, Billy.
I'll say it.
John makes a motion, second, my house, give a thousand dollars donation. Any more discussion? Hearing none, vote. And if he sets special meetings for June the 30th and 25th.
So the special meeting is the same one we have every year, so that we can not have the budget before the end of the year, it has to be not before the end of the fiscal year. And then I'll also, before that day, the salary schedule that you guys tabled, I'll prepare several that show different percentages, so that way if you guys want to make a change, you can look at the different ones and vote on that day and we'll set salary for twenty-five, twenty-six that day.
I'll make the motion. I'll say it. Motion made, and second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Next time is to approve the. And the one that will be driving.
I guess it's a bid for asphalt, for mountain enterprises. And, okay. Plant price, Kentucky Class One, dash twenty surface, which is a wearing top coat. Ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents per ton. Kentucky Class One binder, ninety-two, twenty-five per ton. Kentucky Class One base, eighty-six dollars and fifty cents per ton. Delivered and laid in place, this includes your tackle, your traffic control, anywhere in Lawrence County. It's one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-five cents per ton. Delivered and laid, patching price, includes tackle, traffic control, anywhere in Lawrence County. A hundred and forty dollars and eighty-five cents per ton. The first mile is five dollars plus, and twenty-five cents a mile from there on.
And they give you because it's all for five dollars?
Uh, it says delivery only price is first mile five dollars plus, but in the, any mile that Joe breaks another quarter per mile.
Okay.
For delivered fee, they just print it delivered.
Okay.
And if it's delivered and laid, it's the patching one forty and eight dollars. And that's, that's it. Okay, gentlemen. All right, this is American asphalt of West Virginia. Kentucky Class One, six-point surface, wearing top coat, ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents per ton. Kentucky Class One binder, eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents per ton. Kentucky Class One base, eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents per ton. So here's the delivered and laid and placed price. Is it no bid? Let's take, let's go get on that, and yes, that's it.
Probably a different. Could be different.
I have BTI, contract incorporated, that's white hot industry. Plant brass. Class one, no bid. Class one binder, no bid. Class one base, no bid. Delivered and laid and placed price, includes tackle and the traffic control, anywhere in Lawrence County. Twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents per ton. Delivered and laid, patching price, four, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five.
I'm sure it's on call.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Maybe just have.
We're taking it there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there's, we're going down here, I think, but this is. Delivered and laid, patching price, no additional charge. Delivered only price, twelve fifty per ton, and a hundred and ten dollars per hour. So I guess they kind of, like, break it down that way. So much per hour.
What does it deliver only per ton?
Delivered only price, twelve fifty per ton. And a hundred and ten per hour.
I'm like, I.
That's all it says.
Not again.
Someone gets something like.
I would assume it's all good.
Like, things are like.
Number two. Twenty-eight ninety-seven. Number four. Twenty-eight ninety-seven. Number eight. Thirty-six ninety-seven. Number fifty-seven. Thirty-one twenty-two. Crusher run. Twenty-six ninety-seven. DGA. Twenty-six ninety-seven. Number tens. Twenty-eight eighty-three. Number nine M. Forty-two oh-three. Field sand delivered. Twenty-three oh-one. Class one sand delivered thirty-four oh-one. That's all I had.
Number twos is eleven forty-five a ton. Number fours eleven forty-five a ton. Number eights is twenty, twenty-one fifty. Fifty-sevens is fourteen thirty. Crusher run is ninety seventy-five. DGA is ten twenty-five. Rip rack number two is thirteen fifteen. And number threes is fifteen twenty-five. And shop rock is fifteen twenty-five. Field sand is four fifty a ton. And class one sand is nine dollars a ton.
I have buffalo family resources. They have pickup and delivery prices. Most of them. Number two, uh, I'll start with pickup now. Number two pickup is eleven dollars. Delivered is twenty-six dollars. Number four work is eleven dollars. Delivered is twenty-six dollars. Number eight. Is nineteen dollars. Delivered is thirty-four dollars. Fifty-sevenths pickup is fifteen dollars. Twenty-nine dollars delivered. Crusher run pickup is eight dollars and twenty-five cents. It's twenty-three twenty-five delivered. DGA is nine dollars pickup. Twenty-four dollars delivered. Rip rack number one is thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Delivered is twenty-eight twenty-five. Rip rack number two. Pickup is thirteen twenty-five. Delivered is twenty-eight twenty-five. Rip rack number three pickup fifteen fifty. Delivered is thirty dollars and fifty cents. Shop rock is fifteen dollars and fifty cents pickup. Thirty dollars and fifty cents delivered. Mine four pickup is eleven dollars. Number four sixty-seven.
How much did mine give?
Uh, eleven dollars.
Pickup?
Just pickup.
Okay. What was that next?
Number four sixty-seven. Is eleven dollars picked up. Number ten pickup is three fifty. It's a lot. No, three fifty.
Mister one.
That's, that's.
One estimate.
And just like eggs at a real small. Number eleven's picked up is eleven dollars and fifty cents. Number eight's picked up is nineteen dollars. So I'm kinda guessing that number ten's supposed to be for a penny. It's gonna be closing for the label. So mine shop rock. Is fifteen dollars and fifty cents picked up. And I didn't put any bits for, for sand at all. Almost all the, 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 the.
Well, the only difference in all of it is not much of a rip rack. Cause when you look through out of work.
Hey, most of my agents support. How much motion would we say will always be? That we can serve for that and it's been one service cases to pick up from someone else at the captain.
Sorry, you do it like you normally do, a local pickup in case of needing something here.
Probably local.
Oh no, but. You know, we normally accept somebody in case you go and get something right away.
Pickup would be close local, local would be, uh, what's kind of saying at the start, but they're not. It's the, and job.
About the local field.
So now if we're getting sand, we're going to have to get it somewhere else.
Yeah, so they don't have some.
Big, hard.
Chief.
Good for us for sand.
So we have our sand now?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a podium, I need a. Any more discussion? Here in, uh.
Oh, 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 yeah.
No, this is quite big.
Actually, your sand out of work.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah, thirty-four.
Fifty. Out of work, who's that?
That's.
Yeah.
No, that's, that's, that's. That's my client, who's on that.
Thank you.
No, that was on your, uh, field sand.
Uh, we went down and it's, uh, it's, it's, uh, a different sand. Uh, these, uh, gravel pits, it's a different sand, it's unlike mine. We'll have to, we will have to check this and make sure we're not, uh, ready for sanding.
How old are you on the same? At, at work.
The change in, uh, how much sanding is there?
Can you change this song number local? Local or no pickup?
Okay, no, don't say this anymore discussion, just carrying none, roll call. Uh, this is, uh, a different pine, and this is from Detective Contractors Supply Incorporated, Grayson Contag. All right, this is, uh, all paid at price. All right. Number twelve, or twelve inch, twenty foot length BD pine. Six dollars. Fifteen inch ABS in twelve pipe, twenty foot length. Eight thirty-nine. Now this is per foot, this would be a, yeah. Eighteen inch ABS in twelve pipe, twenty foot length. Twelve thirty-six. Twenty-four inch, same as twenty dollars. Thirty inch is twenty-nine dollars. Thirty-six inch. These are all ABS in, uh, twelve pipe, twenty-foot length.
Twenty-four, you say twenty-four or was twenty dollars?
Twenty dollars even, yes.
Okay, and then thirty was?
Thirty inches is twenty-nine dollars even. Thirty-six inches is thirty-six seventy-five. Forty-two inches is fifty-one twenty-five. And forty-eight inches is sixty-three dollars. All right.
How much did you say the last one was?
Sixty-three dollars for forty-eight inch wood. All right. Ready? Ready. Twelve inch aluminumized sixteen gauge, sixteen dollars a foot. Eighteen inch aluminumized sixteen gauge, twenty-five dollars a foot. Twenty-one inch aluminumized sixteen gauge, twenty-seven a foot. Twenty-four inch aluminumized sixteen gauge, thirty-one sixteen a foot. Thirty inch aluminumized sixteen gauge, forty dollars a foot. Thirty-six inch aluminumized sixteen gauge, fifty dollars a foot. Forty-two inch aluminumized sixteen gauge, fifty-six dollars a foot. Forty-eight inch aluminumized sixteen gauge, sixty-one dollars a foot.
How much was that?
Sixty-one dollars a foot is forty-eight inch. The fifty-four inch aluminumized is fourteen gauge and it is eighty-five dollars a foot. Sixty inch aluminumized is twelve gauge, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot. Seventy-two inch aluminumized fourteen gauge, one thirty twenty-seven per foot. Galvanize, twelve inch galvanize. Sixteen gauge, fourteen fifty. Fifteen inch galvanize sixteen gauge, eighteen dollars. Eighteen inch galvanize sixteen gauge, twenty-two oh-five. Twenty-one inch galvanize sixteen gauge, twenty-seven dollars. Twenty-four inch galvanize sixteen gauge, thirty-one dollars. Thirty inch galvanize sixteen gauge, thirty-eight dollars. Thirty-six inch galvanize sixteen gauge, forty-four ten. Forty-two inch galvanize sixteen gauge, fifty-three dollars. Forty-eight inch galvanize sixteen gauge, sixty-one dollars. Fifty-four inch galvanize sixteen gauge. A five by one, and I, I don't understand the specs on that, but it's for representative five by one, I'm not gonna do the five by six. Uh, but it's eighty dollars. Uh, sixty inch galvanize sixteen gauge, five by one is, uh, ninety-two fifty-five. And a seventy-two inch galvanize fourteen gauge, five by one is one thirty-two fifteen.
I've got grains unlimited. On old agro, old agro mountain road.
Okay, we're on grains unlimited.
All right. Okay, I'll start with the place. Uh, twelve inch ADS. Seven dollars and seventy-two cents. Fifteen inch is ten dollars and fifty-four cents. The eighteen inch. Is fourteen dollars and eighteen cents. Twenty-four inch. Is twenty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Thirty inch ADS. Is thirty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Thirty-six inch ADS is thirty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Forty-two inch. Sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents. Forty-eight inch. Seventy-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. And sixteen inch. Is one hundred and twenty-eight, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and four cents. Okay, aluminumized. The twelve inch is seventeen dollars and sixty-six cents. The eighteen inch is twenty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. So they don't have to pick each. Twenty-one inch aluminumized. Is thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Twenty-four inch aluminumized is thirty-six dollars and twenty cents. Thirty inches. Is forty-four dollars and thirteen cents. Thirty-six inch aluminumized is fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Forty-two inch aluminumized is sixty-one seventy-nine. Forty-eight inch aluminumized is seventy dollars and sixty-two cents. Fifty-four inch aluminumized is ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents. Sixteen inch aluminumized is one hundred and forty-three dollars and one cent. Seventy-two inch aluminumized is one hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. The galvanize. Twelve inch galvanize is seventeen dollars and seven cents. Fifteen inch galvanize, twenty dollars and forty-nine cents. Eighteen inch galvanize. Twenty-five dollars, sixty-one cents. Twenty-one inch galvanize is thirty dollars and thirty cents. Twenty-four inch galvanize is thirty-five dollars even. Thirty inch galvanize is forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Thirty-six inch galvanize. Fifty-one twenty-two. Forty-two inch galvanize is fifty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Forty-eight inch galvanize. Sixty-eight dollars, twenty-nine cents. Fifty-four inch galvanize. Eighty-seven dollars, eighty-nine cents. Sixteen inch galvanize. Ninety-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Seventy-two inch galvanize is one forty-one and a third.
Need a motion and a sand on the chief.
I'm gonna motion with the, motion for.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call. Okay, um, five old safe streets and roads, are you carrying on about that?
Yeah.
Anything, Dee?
I, I, I just, we did, uh, we, uh, we are part through a, uh, Safe Streets For All grant in which we are going to do a, uh, safety plan for Lawrence County. Uh, right now, all that will consist of is, uh, you know, me and Lord Bryson, uh, we're getting with the county road foreman. And we'll be going up and around most of the roads here in, in Lawrence County and just seeing where things, uh, need to be addressed, you know, like, uh, there may be some road that needs to be cut or, uh, striding that needs to be done, or, or turn signs that need to be put in. So we're gonna put this safety plan together. Now, the, the good thing for Lawrence County is the wages that, let's say, when, when we use your, your road foreman, uh, you know, or some of the road crew to go around with us to ship, well, that's costing you guys money, that, that's your wages that you're paying. Well, we're reimbursing you for that. That, that will be no money out of, out of Lawrence County's pocket at all, we are going to pay those wages. Whenever, uh, we use anybody to take, you know, when we take them around to the city streets, you know, and things now through the county, so we will reimburse. I think, uh, each of my three counties has up to, uh, I think we'll reimburse up to around twelve, thirteen thousand dollars, something like that, which I don't, I don't think that would take much, but, uh, but we're gonna reimburse up to that, because that should be about right. Uh, once this plan is done and put together, it'll be published. Uh, the purpose of it right now is that, uh, there are many different types of grants that can't even be applied for unless you have a safety plan in your county. So that's one of the reasons why we want to get this plan put in place. And then eventually the goal is after that to go ahead and get the other part of the grant to actually correct some of those things on the county roads, you know, to pay for having, uh, some of the road put back, or, or cut back, some of the signs put up and in place, uh, some of the striding done, that way it's of no cost to the county. But what I need is, uh, cause I just sent Vince the, the agreement, uh, between, uh, us and the county or UK and the county, and all I need is that to be approved. And then we can start moving forward around July in that, but, uh, but, uh, that, that is a reimbursement plan, you know, whatever, uh, wages you guys use for whoever goes along with us, uh, we will reimburse that.
Okay, sounds good, I'm just checking for.
Do we need a motion on that?
You, you do, yes, sir.
I might have a motion.
I'll say that. Uh, I'll be checking any more discussion.
We're celebrating when our kids have success and, uh, we wanted to, we lose one. And I do appreciate your all's support and our school district and our kids very much, thank you.
I think we may have worked.
I went, well, yeah, I'm twenty-nine already.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I have a question, Phil. Who?
That's the tapes.
And the board has to meet to, they can't come to agreement with PPA's assessment, and generally they don't have a lot of people to come, but they still have to review the PPA's on assessments on their own property. So people have to have a background in real estate or banking and stuff, so they have to come off the board after three years and, and, and replace. We always need someone with the banking or insurance or some, uh, real estate, someone has to have a background in that, so.
Any other plates in?
Bobby Cruz. The county, the judge has a foreman, fiscal has a foreman, the city has a foreman, there's three people on the board.
You have anything, Rayo?
No, we're just waiting for the Senator to.
Okay. Uh, is, uh, you have, you have anything here?
No, I just, uh, wanna put out there that we had our annual free fishing day with the kids, the board, and that went really well. Also, we had our sheriff's camp and the county camp around, like Mr. Bill, like, Chris Joe, everybody that participated in that, we had a really good time, had about thirteen children.
Congratulations softball team again, also, uh, understanding, uh, Coach Sparks and Coach New York, Free Jones, Adam Free Jones was, uh.
John, that was awesome.
Technically, this is a court, right? So I bet she heard it herself.
And if we're gonna do a birthday, John here, it's his birthday too.
Who, John?
Well, let's just confirm to everybody.
How, how old are you, John?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, that's, that's a happy birthday.
Birthdays.
Come on, girl, leave.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to our loved ones. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you.
Pretty simple, I don't mean, the, 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 there you always get something.
Thank you, birthday.
No, it's, it's an obvious. Kevin, um, it's good, uh, we're always busy at the park's office and stuff like that, like with taxes going good, the sixty-day letters just have county park's office, which is pretty good with that. It'll be time to set rates here shortly, uh, same like, like you said, it'll grow around. Uh. Curious wise, we have Bridge Day and Freddie Vincent Day will be, uh, the twenty-seventh. That'll be at six o'clock back here, go have food trucks, some local. That will be at six o'clock back here, go have food trucks, some local man's playing, we always walk across, less of the day that Louis, for that bridge was open, and, uh, we walk across to for game, we walk back and talk a little bit about the issue, so, obviously we have local food trucks and some. Fourth of July, uh, festivities here at Louise on the fourth, and then Fallsburg on July the fifth, we have festivities at Fallsburg.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate the softball team, and Sheriff Jackson and Alen Walker, all the new teams, that he's, they really enjoyed it.
Now, if John, anything?
Okay, I think it's on the motion.